Do you do a... Okay.
Hi, this is President Kim Leonard and we will be starting the board meeting shortly. I apologize for the delay. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi Claudia, this is Kim. We're starting shortly. Is that you? I think I'm on. I would like to call this meeting to order on August 19th at 5:10 with a roll call.
Gina Cannon?
Absent.
Catherine Fontaine? Catherine Fontaine? I'm going to say absent.
You know what? She might... she is showing that she is present on Zoom.
She's muted.
Yep.
I'm going to circle that and come back. I don't know what else to do about that. So Colleen Clemsec, present. Dan Malloy?
Here.
Kevin O'Connor?
Here.
Claudia Parker? Kim Leonard?
Here.
Okay, Catherine Fontaine?
Catherine is out.
Catherine Fontaine?
She's back on here.
Let the record show that Catherine Fontaine is via telezoom and so is Claudia Parker. At this time, could you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I would like someone to make a motion to approve the agenda as outlined.
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Roll call. Colleen Clemsec? Yes, Kevin. Colleen Clemsec, yes, Kevin O'Connor?
Yep.
Catherine Fontaine?
Yes.
Claudia Parker? Roll call up on that. Gina Cannon, absent. Dan Malloy?
Yep.
And Kim Leonard.
So you're not supposed to say yes or here. I just heard my name.
Yes.
Catherine, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like someone to make a motion to recess the closed session to discuss the employment, compensation, and discipline performance or dismissal of specific employee of the district or of legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. Do I have somebody to make the first motion? Dan Malloy made the first section and the second motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Second, Colleen Clemsec. At this time, we anticipate that we will come back in closed session. I mean, we will come out of closed session at 6:15.
Okay. I have such good...
Hi. Hi, thank you for your patience as we're joining the Zoom call. Claudia, do you want to turn off your video?
Sure.
And it looks like we have everyone available. We are going to resume. Please be patient with us, we will just start in one moment. Thank you for waiting for us to resume the Evergreen Park School Board meeting. We are resuming an open session at 6:47. Before we begin staff reports, we would like to make an adjustment to the agenda. And we are, I would like someone to make a motion to table under action items, A, as an apple, the number eight, and B as in boy, the FFCRA leave of absence. I would like to table that until a further date. Do I have somebody to make a motion and a second motion?
I'll make that motion.
Gina Cannon and Kevin O'Connor has made the first and second motion. Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to turn over to Dr. Longo and Dr. Webb to, under the staff reports, to start their superintendent reports.
Good evening, President Leonard, members of the Board of Education, and members of the audience. Hope everyone is so glad to see everyone this evening. The first item on our agenda is Adult Education Update. We have had a meeting with Ms. Stranton Stanton, and we're happy to report that we have 12 parents who have signed up for the adult class. And they will have their first end person meeting on September 8th at Central Office. And after that, all classes will be remote. We're so happy that we're able to continue this wonderful program. The second item is our partnership with Christ Advocate Aurora. We're very happy to report that the district can provide compensatory time for our PT and OT through Arrow. But however, we're exploring our options with Christ Advocate for medical consultation, for behavior and health concerns for our students and our families, as well as, they have several community-based programs that they are making available to us, as well as COVID testing. With COVID testing, they start with, first if you have symptoms, you go online, if you're, and then after that, they can arrange for a telemed conference, followed by an actual test. So they have a procedure in place that we are, we will be able to access. We're very happy to bring to you this developing partnership, and we hope to have more information soon because it may require some resolution with our board as we look at, as they look at our needs and as we work together. And they're very excited to be part of this district. They welcomed us, and so we're very happy to bring that to you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Webb, for updating us about the adult education program. Ms. Stanton does a great job making sure that she communicates to the public their available programs, so that's great. And the partnership with Advocate Aurora sounds wonderful. I look forward to hearing more about how that's going. At this time, Denise Mcfield will be presenting on the preschool programs for Northeast and Northwest, the Gold Circle of Quality Award.
Good evening. So about every two and a half to three years, our pre-K program is monitored to ensure that we have a high-quality program for our three- to five-year-olds. So over the last seven years, we've been monitored. We were monitored in 2013, 14 school year, the 2016, 17 school year, and also last year, the 2019, '20 school year. During all three of these monitoring visits, our programs at Northeast and Northwest have received the Gold Circle of Quality Award. And basically, the state comes in to monitor us with a set of standards that focus on the early learning and development and places a high priority on the following areas: instructional excellence, family services, staff qualification, professional development, and program administration. I am so very proud of our teachers and our staff members that have worked in our program. They work so very hard, and I just wanted to make sure that I give them kudos for all the work that they have done and their dedication to our students and our program. So I just wanted to give thanks to the following staff members for their dedication. We have Rob San Jenny, who's our parent educator, who assures that our volunteers are taking care of when they come into our program. They make sure that our parents have appropriate parent-child activities. And they also assure that our parents have a special social ability. Also, Shabash Carter, Megan McCarry, who are our architecture architects, are very essential to our program. They're vibrant in their case, and they're well-rounded with technology. And all four of our teachers are parent specialists. Laura Wall, Ms. Michelle Batchelor, Jacqueline Conley, Kathy Crenshaw, Maria Leo, Johnny Billy, Alex Rorosa, and Lisa Prongo. So we are so very proud of our program, and they are doing a wonderful job.
Awesome, thank you so much, Denise, for sharing such great news. We certainly have a great kindergarten and preschool program, and we are so grateful for all the hard work that they did going into earning that accomplishment. Thank you. At this time, the next thing that we have on our agenda is the Midwest PBIS recognition for Northeast, Southeast, Central Middle School Silver, Northwest Gold, and Southwest Platinum.
So we'd like to congratulate our schools. As you know, Evergreen Park 124, very early on in the PBIS program, got involved under Ms. Ardean Hope, who was the principal at Northeast, who became a nationally-known PBIS person, started the programs here in the district. And our schools continue to embrace this positive behavior intervention systems, working with kids for pro-social behavior. And I'm proud to say that all of our schools received recognition for their programs with PBIS.
That is great. I'm sorry, it takes a little while for this to unmute. Oh my gosh, great job for the PBIS. And again, all the recognition and hard work that goes into the PBIS. And now, these are just such positive things that we're hearing about with opening of our schools this year for the 2021 school year. And it looks like next on our agenda is Northwest School, Sparrow, School Sparrow's top 30 suburban schools. Thank you.
So School Sparrow is a new system of ranking schools based on equity and looking at diversity and looking at parent income. And they ranked 30 suburban schools showing excellence in schools that might be challenged by other demographics or issues. And so we're proud to say that Northwest School was named one of the top 30 suburban schools in Illinois. So congratulations, Dr. Bannack and his staff.
I did read that article the day that I saw it on social media. I was so excited, like, wow, I've never seen this. So I'm sure the rest of the board recognize all these great accomplishments. I see a lot of head nodding in the room. Thank you so much for sharing the good news with all of this. Next, we're going to move into the 2020 Five Essential Surveys. I believe Alex Maester will be presenting.
No, not tonight.
I apologize. I apologize.
So we have been planning for the reopening of school, and we really want to really go over the 2020 Five Essentials Survey with you at the September Board meeting. We think it's important information because it really surveys our children and our families, as well as our staff, to give you a clear picture on how people are feeling about our schools. So that presentation will be in September, but we wanted you to know that a few days ago, we got the information in.
Thank you, Dr. Longo and Mr. Maester for letting us know. That's great. So we look forward to hearing about the Five Essential Survey results next month. And are going to move on to the next, which is the student enrollment.
Okay, as of today, we have 1,537 children fully enrolled in our schools. Last year at this time, we had 1,200. We tend to get more children after Labor Day, but 1,537 are fully enrolled and have passed all of our benchmarks for enrollment. So we're pleased to say that our children are coming back and ready to go to school.
Thank you, Dr. Longo, for sharing that information with us. Does any of the board members have any questions up to now with any of the information that's presented? I know we're kind of moving quickly on some of this, and I don't want to miss any questions. At this time, there are no questions. Maybe, sorry.
Okay, so what did we end, how many students? This is Colleen Clemson. How many students did we end last year with?
I believe it was close to 1,900 children.
Okay, thank you. So 1,882? Okay. Okay, thank you, both of you.
Okay, great, that was a great question. That was a great question, Colleen. We're going to move on to the school calendar 2021 changes with Dr. Longo and Dr. Webb again.
So we made some changes to the calendar to allow more time for staff planning and getting assimilated back into the building. So today was new teacher orientation. The next two days will be our regular professional development days, but Monday and Tuesday will be days that teachers and principals work in their buildings to make sure that all procedures and processes are in place. And the children will start A through LI on Wednesday, and LJ through Z on Thursday, with Friday being the first full day of student attendance. We also have a remote learning day on September 18th. We're going to be doing STAR testing in the first few weeks of school, and we can do it for in-person and remote. Ms. Prado worked with the company so that our remote children will have access to the test, too, so we can start assessing strengths and weaknesses and find out where gaps are so we can really help our children and help our families with those issues.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions about the calendar? No. Okay, so we're going to move on to the next one, which is our planning for the 2021 school year.
So committees have been meeting since the beginning of July for six weeks. We've had 75 people involved in planning. And last night, we had a all-staff Zoom meeting and went over health protocols, social-emotional learning, building grounds, special education, English language learners, pre-K and AC curriculum instruction, including remote learning, food service, and before and after-school care. It's a 96-page document. You should have a copy of it in front of you in the binder. Please, if you could read it by tomorrow morning at 8:00, there'll be a quiz on it. But a big thank you, several staff members' names are embedded in the document. We couldn't have done it without our teachers and our staff. Our administrators were incredible leaders in this effort and worked long hours to make sure that their committees had the appropriate information and support. So a big shout-out to our administrators and our teachers for working together collaboratively to develop a plan for safely opening schools.
That sounds great. And is there going to be a Google Form document for that quiz tomorrow morning?
Yes. Alex, can you make sure?
Thank you so much. There's been, I briefly looked at it when we came in this evening, and it's filled with a lot of information, and it looks like so much hard work and dedication, and I appreciate you sharing all those documents with us. Next, we're going to move on to the committee procedures for reopening schools, and I will turn it over to you again.
That's what we just talked about. So we went through two.
I'm sorry. I know, two at the same time. I apologize. Things are moving quite quickly. I was going to, so is there any questions for any of these, for Dr. Webb and Dr. Longo from the school board about any of the information that she's presented to us? Okay. No. There is, Ms. Clemson commented, there's a lot of reading. Yes, there sure is. So we're going to move over to the business office reports with Mr. Kosteki reporting out today. Hold on one moment, and we'll get Mr. Kosteki on.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Technology. All right, so the month of July, this is the first half of the financials, which of course are the revenues. We would have expected quite a bit more revenue than we did receive in July. Right now, the preponderance of our revenue that we receive is from levies, and we are running about $900,000 short over what we would have expected and what we did receive last year. So that kind of concerns me a little bit as to whether or not this is a pattern that's going to start to develop. You do remember that they delayed the tax collection where you had to make your payments, but my understanding is that all the banks that had escrow payments for real estate taxes were due to turn them over. So if that's the case, then I'm only left to worrying about the large retail outfits, whether or not they have made their payments. I will keep you posted as we learn more in the next month to see if we get caught up here. But you have to also keep in mind that any collections we receive in July and August get recorded in the prior year, so this could have a negative impact on the final results of last year's financials. We received no state money whatsoever, so there are certain categorical revenue items that the state normally should have been paying by now, and they have not. Transportation, as I'm saying, plus one, we received no money. We'll see what August brings. We don't generally find that out to the last day in August. Only other money we did receive was from the federal grants. Can we switch to the next slide? As far as expenses, quite frankly, there's very, very little expenses. It's just some of the back-to-school starting expenses that we would normally see, and some staff members that are 12 months' salary. And there's nothing inordinate about that. As far as our current fund balance, that's about, 10,600,000 represents about a 4.5 months' worth of cash balance on reserve. Obviously, if we would have collected the $900,000 in levy monies that I fully expected, that would have moved us up to about six, which is our general expectations. Are there any particular questions on the monthly financials for July? All right, I think the next... I've heard a rumor that there were some payments being made in August, but I want to see. You try to go to FRIS, which is the state website, and there's very little information there, so it's kind of hard for me to know what they paid. I'm more concerned about the real estate taxes than I am about the state. The state is oftentimes just timing. Real estate taxes could be a protracted problem. Particularly the commercial side. I don't believe they put monies in escrow, and if they're abstaining from payments because of these times, then that could have a long-term carryover effect.
I'm sorry, Tim. I'm sorry, Tim. Could you hear me?
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Hi.
Okay.
I can.
Could you just kind of, could you repeat the question that Kevin O'Connor asked? I'm sorry, I'm not sure everyone could hear it.
Kevin was asking more about the state money as to whether or not there's any indications that we're going to receive the state money in a timely manner. And I do believe we will start to receive a certain amount of money in August, which would then get posted to the prior year financials. So that was the gist of this question. All right, the next phase of my presentation has to do with the budget for next year. I, in preparing for the budget of the new fiscal year, I made some rather significant decisions as to what I project certain component parts of revenues would come in at during the course of the year. Traditionally, we budget to have like 1% to 2% of our revenues not be collected ultimately, and just be, I don't want to say bad debt, but it's just sometimes they take years to get collected. In these times, I've made the presumption that we will go up to 4%, almost three to four times the level of bad debt presumption that I normally make. And that kind of decision alone brings our revenue projections down by about $750,000. So I'm trying to be, I don't want to use the word pessimist, but I want to try to make sure that we, because these are going to be different kinds of times, whether or not we have enough, that we have enough foresight in our budgeting. Most of the other general line items, I discounted by 60% to 70%, i.e. food, extended day, various activities that we received during the course of the year, because, you know, A, you have about 30% of your population will not actually be coming to school, whether or not reciprocally we would be able to get the money from the federal government for the food program because they came and picked up their lunches, is an unknown. So when it's an unknown, I tried to be a little more conservative. I've also had heard that the corporate personal property tax is going to be not as significant as we've seen in the past, because the state is going to be touching that, I guess is the way to say it. So overall, I think I've held to a rather conservative approach in my revenue projections. And with that, when we get to the expense side, I also had to take a rather sharp pencil to a lot of the particular line items within the budget. We, salary-wise, of course, this is year two of our labor contract, which was for a rather significant cost increase, but we did have some reciprocal savings due to some staff retirements and certain amount of stipends that presumably will not be paid during the course of this year. We've also had some reasonably significant savings in our employee benefits due to health insurance. We've switched the provider, which is a different co-op, and that had a rather significant savings. And so the two kind of offset each other. And then when we were going through the line items for supplies, capital outlets, and things of this nature, we pushed to make sure that all we were budgeting for is the most essential things. So the revenue softness and expense control, I think we can still come in at a break-even So that would be the proposed budget I would publish for the next, upon your ratification, I would post it for the next 30 days for public review. Is there any particular questions on the budget?
Hey, Tim, could you hear me on the...
I can hear you.
So it looks like our non-audited, that we're coming in about a half a million in deficit spending? Is that what it looks like?
Yeah, that's the way we ended the year. Now, of course, the things that change it is July and August activity, revenue-wise and expense-wise get brought backwards. But like I've spoken to, I'm a little nervous that there won't be as much July and August revenues that normally would have gotten collected brought back, so I'm really not too certain where that's going to end.
All right. Is there anyone else that has any questions looking at this slideshow? Kevin O'Connor, are you going to speak?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Perfect.
What sort of additional expenses are we seeing in dealing with supplies and things of that nature that are not usual?
I mean, obviously, we've had a certain amount of COVID-related supplies where you definitely have been stuck in. We did get about $253,000. So that goes a long way for trying to help us, but we are probably going to be slightly over that. It's face masks and all these special steps are very, very expensive, and especially when they are the only show in town sometimes. So we're prepared, we've tried to make all the right steps. Thank you.
Catherine and Claudia, do you have any questions for Tim before we move on to the next part of our presentation?
Hi, Tim. No, I do not. Thank you.
Catherine, you'll have to hit star six if you'd like to answer if you're having trouble unmuting. Okay, so we're going to move on. We're going to move back just a few slides for a moment and go back to some statistics that Dr. Longo will be sharing with us. Dr. Longo, I'm going to turn it over to you now.
So as promised, we were going to bring to you the Evergreen Park information that is shared with the CDC. And so the good news in the last 24 hours, we had zero new positive cases in Evergreen Park. As you can see, we're watching this on a daily basis. We told you there was a little bit of trending up at the beginning of the month of July, and so we started keeping the data on a daily basis. And so the previous two days, there were three positive cases, 3.5 and 1.5. So for the last week, we were really excited to see this downward trend, especially with the information that came out from the state today, to see that Evergreen Park is really holding its own. We've had 346 positive cases in Evergreen Park since inception of data collection, and over 4,000 Evergreen Park residents have been tested. But, you know, we're pretty excited to see that data in our area and hope it continues. And I think with proper procedures followed, we can keep that in check. And can you provide the next slide? Alex, please. So the next slide talks to you about districts in the state of Illinois. And we know that we have 24.65% of the districts in the entire state are going fully remote. We have in-person, going fully in-person, 29.53, and blended remote, 45.82. The sources of this information is the Illinois State Board of Education, who keeps track of the models. Of course, we've seen some models this afternoon where some districts have gone to remote, but we are also hearing that many of our districts close to us are remaining in the same model we're in, which is blended remote. And so altogether, 75.35% of the districts are going either full in-person or blended remote learning.
Thank you, Dr. Longo, for sharing that information with us. I love that we're seeing no positive cases for the last two days. That's really a great movement in the right direction towards capturing this virus and getting it under control. So thank you for sharing that very important data with us. And also the data that reflects what the state of Illinois is looking like for reopening in schools. And you're right, like 75% of the school districts are trying to do in-person and the blended remote for their families and their students. And could you tell us again where they can get that information, if they'd like to look it up?
From the Illinois State Board of Education website.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to the public comments. What we've done this time with the public comments is we've captured them all on these slides, and I will not read them, but I will tell you who they are from and give about a 30 seconds, 30 seconds to a minute to read them. At this time, someone, the first public comment is from Deborah Weston. She's a retired teacher. And thank you, Alex. I'll kind of give you a heads-up when it's time to move to the next one. The next slide is showing Ellen Dugan, and she is a teacher. The next public comment is from Lisa Banios Cruz, and she is also a teacher. The next slide for public comments is Samantha Morick and his parent in Evergreen Park School District. The next public comment is from Debbie Izzo, a parent of Evergreen Park School District. The next public comment is Debbie Gibbons, a teacher in our school district. Our next public comment is Tracy Gleason, a teacher in our school district. And then our, the, um, I'm sorry. And that concludes all of our public comments. These public comments, um, will be made, obviously you'll be able to review them again on the YouTube, um, recording that will be published on our website. At this time, we are going to move on to our board reports. Sorry about that. So at this time, um, we've concluded the business office, the public comments, uh, and we are going to, uh, move on to the next, uh, item under public comments, which is the, the co- co-presidents Katie Patrice and Joanne Riley, and along with their vice president, uh, Julie O'Connor are invited to speak and present. Uh, at this time, um, just so you know, if you can't get it on mute, uh, Alex says star six to unmute. Who would ever like to go first? Uh, she is going to be going, she, you're being presented with, with them instead of under the public comments. Okay.
Hi, I am Julie O'Connor, the vice president of the union. Uh, I am here tonight to make a public comment on behalf of our staff. And based on the comments that have already been made, I can tell that this is kind of an ongoing concern. We, uh, thank everybody for all their tireless work of getting us in class because that's ultimately what we all want to do is to be in class with our students as soon as possible and as much as possible. But with these new guidelines and the town meeting that was presented, and then we had our all-staffed Zoom last night, there are some concerns about the spacing in the classroom. The kids have been set up three feet apart, but yet the new guidelines are six feet apart. So our concern is, will the students need to move farther apart? And then if so, some of the classrooms are at their capacity of how much they can take in that classroom. Um, the other concern too was that with the new guidelines being as strict as they are, if one symptom child has one or more, they need to be evaluated. We're concerned about the amount of students that could potentially be a concern and need to be evaluated. Where would they go? Would they interrupt the flow of the office? Would they be in the holding pattern with a child that has a fever? So some of these things we know what we're going to have to be dealing with tomorrow and very soon, and we just have these concerns. I understand some of these have already been noted in the public comments, so you can understand how concerned we are. Thank you very much for our time.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. O'Connor, for presenting along with, uh, the union presidents now. Uh, thank you, Katie Patrice and Joanne Riley for also joining us today. Come on, you could use mine.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Katie Patrice. I'm here with Joanne Riley, and we are co-presidents of the union. Uh, we want to first thank the board, the administration, and, um, everyone here today for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of our membership. Dr. Longo and Dr. Bridges Webb have invited us to work collaboratively with them from the moment they entered our district. They've worked tirelessly alongside their admin and staff to make this work. We are grateful to all of our administration for their hours spent problem solving and thinking outside the box to make the school year productive. After the committee of the whole meeting last week, Joanne and I emailed a letter to the Board of Education, Dr. Longo and Dr. Bridges Webb outlining our concerns with the return to in-person teaching next week. We requested that Central Middle Schools start off fully remote based on standing concerns, staffing issues, and safety concerns. We conducted an informal poll on August 12th, and at that time, almost 90% of central teachers did not feel safe returning to school due to the issues discussed in that letter. Since then, the IDPH updated their guidelines, guidelines that are incredibly restrictive and make it almost impossible for any building to return to school. This change gave us the cause to poll the entire union membership, and 73% of teachers and staff in our entire district as of today do not feel safe returning to school under these new guidelines. So the IDPH guidelines were updated on August 13th. Since then, districts in Locina, New Lennox, both Tinley Park districts, Orland Park, Taylor Park, Bridge U, Justice, and Burbank, to list a few, went from in-person or hybrid to full remote. With the state's new requirements for quarantining, testing, and contact tracing, it makes it nearly impossible for in-person students and staff to maintain consistent attendance rates. Schedules of both families and teachers will shift constantly in response to the new quarantine protocols. The IDPH guidelines now indicate that students and staff who exhibit just one symptom of COVID should be sent home and tested for COVID before returning to school. If we follow that guidance with fidelity, students and staff members will continuously end up absent for an extended period of time. Their return will be based on the availability of COVID tests and then the rate of which those tests are returned. We have been told that our district has a partnership with Advocate, and we are awaiting the details of that plan. Even so, Advocate may only have a certain number of tests available each day. Students and staff who do not get tested for COVID need to provide a note from a healthcare provider documenting an alternative diagnosis or will need to quarantine for 10 days. This forces parents and staff members to take additional time off work and rely on the availability of their pediatrician or doctor before coming back to school or work. This especially affects those with seasonal allergies, migraines, or other health ailments that will be sending us back and forth to the doctor for testing as the doctor's note or negative test result is good only for the day it was reported. IDPH guidelines also state that contact tracing now needs to go back 48 hours before the onset of symptoms for students or staff members who test positive for COVID. Updated guidelines state that close contact is anyone with or without a face covering who is within six feet of a confirmed case of COVID with or without a face covering for at least 15 minutes throughout the course of a day. Presently, our students are spaced three feet apart, which can mean more attendance issues because students within six feet can be sent home if the new guidelines are followed. The period of close contact begins two calendar days before the onset of symptoms for a symptomatic person or two calendar days before the positive sample was obtained from a symptomatic person. This can affect staffing in schools as the special teachers, interventionists, and other staff who enter multiple classrooms a day will all need to be sent home if the guidelines are followed with fidelity. This will also greatly affect the staffing at Central because all teachers are traveling from room to room. The updated guidelines also state that staff who clean areas used by a suspected or known COVID case, as well as the nurses who are assessing possible cases, need to be fitted and trained on how to properly put on and take off an N95 mask. OSHA requires these masks be fit tested prior to use. We are very grateful our district has ordered the N95 masks, but no one has been fitted to this date. Death shields have not arrived yet either. Additionally, the updated IDPH guidelines state that cleaning and disinfecting products should not be used by children or near children, which can now affect building cleaning schedules.
Let us be clear. Our teachers want to be back with our students. We want to teach. We are looking forward to a productive school year, but we are rightfully very concerned about how these protocols make it nearly impossible to have a productive start to the school year. By following these guidelines with fidelity, our building administration will be tasked with constantly having to fill staff shortages, and teachers and students will be consistently absent. Many of our staff do not live in EP. Yesterday morning, a teacher's husband was tested for COVID. We have permission to discuss this as well, due to the symptoms he is exhibiting. And according to the IDPH guidelines, this teacher should now quarantine for 14 days if we are following the guidelines with fidelity. Having teachers live outside the district can cause a problem for that as well. This imposes a need for a sub for the first week of school with those students. With regard to staffing, simply put, we are short-staffed. Adding on remote classrooms in addition to in-person classes added roles that have not been filled yet in our district. As of August 13th, our junior high was short-staffed in 24 in-person sections and eight remote sections. As of today, we have not been told this has changed. Asking teachers to work through their lunch and planning periods to cover these classes will be very costly to our district because this is an overload of their current workday. For example, at Central, if 24 sections of in-person classes need to be staffed along with eight remote sections, this could cost the district on average $8,000 per week, depending upon the per diem rate of the teacher staffing the class. Another example of being short-staffed is the overload of several of our speech pathologists. Some have over 50 students on their caseload in which half will be have to be taught remotely, and time is of the essence and they may not have enough. In addition, all of the district specials, pre-K, self-contained, and project tree teachers are planning for and teaching both fully in-person and remote, which is also an additional workload and will need to be compensated. Some of our elementary buildings are short-staffed as well. A building without a certified social worker can be detrimental in a time that social emotional learning is a priority after these past six months. An L, in, I'm sorry, an EL teacher is also needed, which is equally important to have during this time of uncertainty. There cannot be a language barrier for these children. Teachers are being moved around to teach in areas in which they are not certified. We know there will be gaps from the spring. Assigning teachers to classes that are not certified in will be an ineffective way to close those gaps. Many teachers now qualify for the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, the FFCRA, now that their children's districts have gone fully remote. This allows teachers to take a childcare leave of absence at two-thirds of their pay for a maximum of $200 a day. The district still needs to pay for a substitute to fill each position in addition to that and will, and will add additional costs to the district. We present this information to you not to cast blame, not to cause opposition, and not to be ungrateful for all the work our administration has done. We've all given our all, we're all worried, and we're all wishing we were back to our pre-COVID days. We acknowledge this is unprecedented. We can all agree that children learn best in the classroom. Everyone worked tire- tirelessly to make this happen. Our superintendents have worked non-stop for the last six weeks, and we are so grateful to them for their energy and their effort. For all that we've accomplished to create an appropriate learning environment for our students, the new IDPH guidelines present an untenable situation. Because of everything we have presented to you, we believe students should attend the first two half-days of school as scheduled to meet their teachers, see their classrooms, and receive their devices and materials. For the remainder of the first quarter, we believe all students should participate in remote learning. This will allow the district time to fill staffing needs, focus on a more manageable budget, and comply with IDPH safety protocol. Again, we want to thank everyone who has participated in the committee work since Dr. Longo and Dr. Bridges Webb arrived. We believe as a community, we can continue to plan and work together to provide the best learning environment for our students. But unfortunately, at this time, in-person teaching is just untenable due to the new IDPH guidelines. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Joanne, and Katie, and Julie for presenting us with, um, all your concerns. We hear you. This is hard. This is hard. Can you hear me? Each and every one of us have spent countless hours with our own schools. I, I too am a teacher, so I hear, and I believe the board acknowledges every one of you, what we heard tonight. We've been given the most challenging job to open schools in a way that we could never imagine. I wholeheartedly applaud all of the D124 staff and their dedication and the weeks spent planning with our administration to welcome our students into the classroom, whether it's remotely or in-person. We are also loved by people in our community. We are moms, we are dads, we are brothers, sisters. We are someone's child. We are also colleagues. We are spouses and friends. And now we are also like essential workers. So it's not taken lightly, your comments tonight. These are unprecedented times. The amount of time organizing has been daunting, and the undertaking of this has been very stressful to all of us. I'm to a teacher, I've spent many sleepless nights wondering what's the right direction for my own middle schooler. We have a choice, in-person right now or remotely, as well as wondering if I can handle the responsibilities of these precious lives in my own career, in my own classroom. I get it. What I am confident of is knowing that D124 is following all the IDPH and ISV guidelines. Our facilities and maintenance staff are working tirelessly with administration and the teachers to maintain the highest level of sanitation in our buildings. Our facilities are wonderful. They have just risen to above what even the standards are for the IDPH and the, and the ISV. Our facility people have reviewed every protocol to make sure our students and our students and our staff are welcomed into these buildings safely. I am grateful in each and every one of them. They totally deserve a round of applause. We hear you. We believe in you. The enormity of this crisis is real to each and every one of us. This virus has stolen so many things from us, but what it has not stolen is the teacher's calling to teach. Each and every one of our teachers, I believe, has a calling to teach remotely, in-person, however that may look. It has not stolen our commitment to our students to provide them with the best education possible. On Friday, March 13th, we all left our classrooms, and they no longer look the same. I remember one of my students that day like it was yesterday. As we're leaving for the day, I was trying to calmly explain in my best teacher voice that this was just a short two-week period, we were told, to help keep us all safe. We all remember that. Our student body was at mass when the news came out that our school would be closing. I had no time to prepare. Just like many teachers in the classroom, we're used to the unexpected. We are used to kids, we are used to things in the classroom that are just, you know, oh my gosh, this happened. I did not expect this one, though. One of my students flung her arms around me, sobbing. This 10-year-old proclaiming, she says, "I have never been through this in my whole entire life. I don't know what to do with this, Mrs. Leonard." I mean, she's 10 years old. So, March 13th, it hit our kids hard. My tears welled up instantly. I told her, "Don't worry, hon, we're gonna be okay." Just like teachers do, we soothe them, we comfort them. We're more than just educators in the classroom. Every student in my classroom, like, kind of turned around when she yelled this. And they're like, "Oh, it's okay, it's okay," because we'd been together since August. So they developed friendships. Some of them started to let their guard down, and I saw their tears in their eyes, too. That's why I am going back into the classroom. I need for our future leaders to see we are resilient, we are strong, and we are here for them. There are no perfect answers, there are no perfect solutions. We are so grateful for all the work that you have done in the collaboration with the superintendents. So again, we believe in you. The motto, I've seen the signs all over Evergreen Park that says, "EP Strong." And I believe, just like the school, we can get back into the classroom safely for our students. So I just would like to leave you with that thought. And I do, I am very grateful that you, all three of you, came in today to speak with us. We're gonna move on to the ERO report, under Board Reports, for governing board meeting review. I believe, Gina?
Can you hear it? Okay, I have the ERO governing board report. The big takeaway from the meeting was, is that Dr. Gannell, at that point, was leaning towards full remote for the ERO program. And since then, they have decided to go full remote. 95% of the staff was uncomfortable coming back because of the special needs of the children. There's really no way to social distance with some of the needs that the children need. And the parents were concerned about transportation, because again, the big piece of that was the social distancing. Some of them were not able to wear masks for the length of time they needed to. So that is why ERO is going full remote. They are starting to cash the bonds in August to start construction of the new building by Queen of Peace. A committee was formed to figure out the best option for the eight districts that are not making payments, that they're just going to pay their fees all at once for that. They still do have 42 instructional teaching positions open, which is normal right now for the teacher shortage. They have an audit going on for their insurance to make sure that no one is on there that shouldn't be, and everybody has the correct coverage that they signed up for. And they had an audit through the state that they had two dings on, and that is because they did not audit the districts that belong to the co-op to make sure that, they were doing an audit on their insurance. People who signed up and who, their employees who signed up and make sure they have the correct coverage. And I believe that is it. That was the whole meeting, it was only about an hour, nice and short.
Thank you, Gina Cannon, for giving the update on the ERO governing board report. At this time, Catherine and Claudia, and anyone in here at the meeting, would you like to ask any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the Schedule Policy Committee meeting.
Done. Scheduled, this is Colleen Climzak, we have scheduled that it will be Wednesday, September 2nd, at 1:00 PM, and we'll go over our current package for now.
Okay, thank you so much, Colleen. Is there any questions about any of the committee work for the schedule policy? No? At this time, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Earlier in the meeting, we did table action item A, as in Apple 8, B as in Boy. We did table that, so we're going to move to, number one is to approve the monthly transaction report for the July 2020. Two is to approve the fund balance report for July 2020. And three is to approve the expenditure report and projected payroll report for August 2020. Number four is to approve the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting of July 9th, 2020. Number five is to approve the board minutes from the regular meeting of July 15th, 2020. Number six is to approve the closed session minutes from the regular meeting of July 15th, 2020. Number seven is to approve destruction of closed session tapes from May 2016. Number eight is personnel recommendations, as outlined below. Under A, there are four additional new staff members. Under B, there's an FMLA leave of absence. For, four members, I'm sorry, for C. For C, there is four leave of absences. For D, there are three extended leave of absences without pay listed for three people. And under E, the resignations, there are five of them. Those are all of the items that we are going to make a motion and vote on. Would somebody please make a motion, and a second motion? Please state your name, who is making the motion. Gina Cannon is making the first motion, and a second.
I'll second, this is Colleen.
All right, and a roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Claudia Parker?
Yes.
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 Motion has passed. B is to approve the proposed budget for the 2020 and 2021 school year, as outlined, and as Mr. Kasecki has presented at the board meeting today, this will run for 30 days, published, and it can be found on our website, I believe. With that being said, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the proposed budget?
I'll make that motion.
Colleen Climzak made the first motion.
I'll second.
Kevin O'Connor made the second motion, and a roll call.
Colleen Climzak.
Yes.
Kevin O'Connor.
Yes.
Daniel Malloy. Claudia Parker.
Yes.
Catherine Fontaine.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Motion has passed. At this time, I just would like to thank everyone for their patience. We do have a room full. I know there has been some questions of in-person board meetings. And I would just like to clarify, we are allowed to have 50 people into the room, and we have almost, it's quite filled this evening with maintaining social distancing rules, as outlined. So please know that it's not that we certainly would not like to see more people in attendance, but at that time, we are following the guidelines suggested, which is 50. And in order to maintain and follow all the rules, we unfortunately cannot invite more people. This will, this YouTube presentation will be published. You will be able to slow down, hopefully, those public comments and be able to read them at a slower pace. We do appreciate everyone's patience in this. We're trying to be as transparent as possible with our community, and at the same time, get this technology glitches worked out. So we do appreciate that. You've been with us tonight, and have a great evening. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting. All in favor? Aye, thank you.